The meeting of the City Council of the City of Dublin will be called to order. We'd ask Pastor Greg Souls of Christ Chapel of Dublin to come forward for the invocation.
I will read a passage out of chapter eight, verses twelve through seventeen. Since I, wisdom, live together with good judgment, I know where to discover knowledge and discernment. All who fear the Lord will have evil; therefore I hate pride and arrogance, corruption, and pervert speech. Common sense and success belong to me; insight and strength are mine. Because of me kings reign, and rulers make just decrees. Rulers lead with my help, and nobles make righteous judgments. I love all who love me, and those who search will surely find me. That is right. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this monumental moment in our city, Lord, as we begin this new year, Lord, with this forty-first City Council meeting. And we thank you, Lord, we send your presence and your grace among us tonight, truly. We ask for a wisdom from above, a wisdom that will serve everyone in this room and everyone in our community so well. Pray, Father God, for liberal amounts, James said, if anyone lacks it, lay a mask, and you would give to them oath of healing, God. We pray tonight, God, for our mayor. We pray for every elected official, city official, we pray for their staff, we pray for every council member here tonight. God, that they would be emboldened, that they would be filled with this wisdom that we seek before tonight, that comes from above. God, that our city and community, God, can be filled with prosperity. Please grant them good judgment between right and wrong. Father, we thank you for that. We thank you, God, for blessing them with good policy, God, with good discovery and light in minds and hearts that they can understand. And we pray that our city will be prospered and protected, and we pray that we will be righteous before you, and we ask the blessings of all on our land, that we may give you all the glory and all the praise, for it's in Christ our Lord we ask. Amen.
The pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everyone for coming to the City Council meeting tonight. We've got a full house. It's great to see everyone here. We are going to begin this evening with the presentation of special awards to employees in the City of Dublin who have performed exemplary, who have had exemplary performance, outstanding performance, and I will let the city manager present those awards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Patty Mountain coming down off. Patty Mountain, please don't mistake this. I'll be coming on. I'll read about Patty. Patty Mountain is an employee of Police Department Seated and Employee of Fourth Quarter for the City of Dublin for 2021. Officer Mountain creates support and motivated working model. Officer Mountain volunteers and participates in intense dealing with the police and has been a key. Officer Mountain has a strong interest in being a governor. Patty demonstrates a pleasant calm and compassionate personality when dealing with the police and fellow employees. Officer Mountain will often volunteer to help him go to extra mile. Patty willingly accepts many different work assignments and has a good working knowledge of these jobs. Officer Mountain is a decision-making ability to support and results in effective resolution. She performs her duties to the highest standards always in her department. She has strong moral principles and has never put up with herself in any manner that would be considered or questioned her or taken. Officer Mountain's personality is such that she can make you have a vote of anger. I can personally attest to that as a senior board member. So today, we recognize you, Patty, and thank you for your service in the city. Congratulations on being Employee of the Quarter for it.
On behalf of the City of Dublin, it's an honor to present you with the Employee of the Quarter, Fourth Quarter, for the City of Dublin. Congratulations and thanks for all that you do. And if you'd like to make any comments, they're limited to five minutes on your speed.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm more working for the city.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Next week, we have Tony Dent coming in. He's in the back there. Tony is the Employee of the Year for 2021 for the City of Dublin. Tony was hired at the city on February fourteenth, two thousand and thirty, which is a total of eighteen years of service. Currently, Tony is the Street State Commissioner in the State Department. He is a great employee and very dedicated to his job. He's a hard-working employee. He does whatever is asked of him without running or complaining. He is usually the first employee to work in twenty and is always there when needed. Tony is the employee to see downtown and daily, keeping the downtown location area beautiful. His main job is to promote, cheering, and answering trees, shrubs, limes, sidewalks, and buildings, watering spray, fertilizing weeds, tanning, cleaning floor mats, moving trash, and roofing downtown, etc. Tony is a great asset to the street department as well as the City of Dublin. If more employees had hard work like Tony, the world would be a voting place. For those reasons, I mean, we're calling him the Vote Employee of the Year for 2021. Congratulations, Tony.
On behalf of the City of Dublin, it's an honor to present you with Employee of the Year for two thousand and twenty-one, the City of Dublin. Congratulations and thanks for all that you do for the city.
First, I say I thank God for making all this possible happen. And I thank the mayor and the city manager for what they do. And I'd like to thank the CHAP members and Pauline Ashon Woods. Thank y'all for what y'all do. Rest of the City of Dublin and rest of everybody in the City of Dublin. Thank you, God bless you.
Georgia Dermatology and Skin Cancer Center has been serving Georgia since nineteen ninety-six. Dr. Michael Sharkey, along with PA's Tony Lynn Herring, Rachel Westerbeck, Alan Manning, and Kelly Toler, have helped patients with most skin cancer surgery, routine skin exams, and general and surgical dermatology. So come see the professionals at Georgia Dermatology and Skin Cancer Center, located in Aaron Office Park in Dublin. Call for an appointment today at two seven five seven five four six.
Maybe he landed here totally by coincidence. But if by chance, he's admiring your fresh coat of Benjamin Moore Soft Sky Blue, well, that's a pretty high compliment. Coming from an expert.
Quality products and installation since nineteen eighty-five. That's Four Seasons.
As everyone knows, tonight is a time of transition. It's a time to welcome the new and to honor those who have certain tasks. We have three special presentations tonight. One of the highest orders that rewards that the city gives is the Order of the Golden Shamrock to those officials or persons who have provided exemplary service to the city. Our first recipient of the Order of the Golden Shamrock for tonight is Jerry Davis. Jerry Davis was first elected in November two thousand and nine and took office in January of two thousand and ten. Jerry was instrumental in the creation and development of the Dublin Barnes Landman Authority, and he served as headquarters chairman from his inception. He also served in the Southside Revitalization Committee, the Economic Development Committee, the Finance and License Committee, and the Visit Dublin Tours and Board. He has always been a passionate advocate for his constituents, and he has served them and the city well. I am pleased tonight to present Jerry Davis with the Order of the Golden Shamrock.
Good afternoon. I do want to take this opportunity to thank all of the citizens of Dublin and the City Council and the City of Dublin. I want to thank the City Council, my fellow council members, for being able to serve and afforded this opportunity. I do want to thank everybody, my friends, supporters of me throughout the years. I do want to say, I want to thank Gary Johnson for serving out the remainder of our term in office. I appreciate it very much. When I first came back to Dublin, I wanted to give ten years of service to the city. I've done that and more, and I do want to say that I love all you, and I'll still be around in the city if you need my help. Thank you.
Tonight, we are also honoring Councilman Curtis Edwards with the Order of the Golden Shamrock. Curtis was first elected in November two thousand and thirteen and took office in January two thousand and fourteen. Before taking office, he served in the Ethics Committee and the Housing Authority Board. He has served as the Public Safety Standing Committee of Council and has always looked after our police and fire departments, which is dear and dear to his heart. He is a large part of the reason that the City of Dublin is getting a new fire station, hopefully in the period of future. Tonight, I am pleased to present the Order of the Golden Shamrock to Curtis Edwards.
Thank you, Justin. It's been a great eight years. It's been fun. You and those who live, those that I believe in, you know, they always have to work, but it can be fun at the same time. I'm going to tell you, we've got some best employees anywhere around in the City of Dublin, and they don't really get the definition of day-to-day basis. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, and you always see employees with a smile, doing everything they can. So this is all of the city employees. Thank you for what you did day in and day out, and God bless you. Thank you.
Finally, I'm pleased tonight to present the Order of the Golden Shamrock to Gerald Smith. Councilman Gerald Smith was first elected in November two thousand and nine and took office in January of two thousand and ten. He has been a longtime member of the International Committee and Recreation Authority Board, where he's been active in the expansion and growth of recreational activities for Dublin. He may be the tallest person to ever visit Japan. He's also served in the Finance and License Standing Committee and has given, and considering the city's current financial condition, which is excellent, he has done a good job in his service on that committee as well. Gerald, it's my pleasure tonight to present you with the Order of the Golden Shamrock.
Well, I didn't know if the last thing was supposed to help, I won't be rushing one. I just want to say thank you to all of you that have allowed me to serve home council. You know, we accomplished an awful lot, I think, but yet there's still a lot of things to be done, and a part of the new council taking over and carrying on a great job for you, for you, the people that we've been here to serve. I've also enjoyed working with the city staff. I don't know, didn't know much about what all went on in the city until I started this job. We've got the most wonderful staff and the most wonderful employees that do day-to-day everything, and ready all of our lives better. And so when you see somebody that's working in a city truck or city vehicle or whatever, you know, city hall, give them a pat on the back, because they'll be appreciating it. I appreciate all the citizens, I appreciate fellow councilmen, I love you all. God bless you.
When your ability to get up out of a chair, stand, walk, and do routine activities without hurting every day, having to take Tylenol, motion, and leave to get through the day, then it's time to come see us. Again, if you're avoiding activities, you're not going to do things with your friends or your family or your children, then you should not let it impact your life like that. We have things from medications to injections to surgery. A lot of people, I think, are scared to come see us initially because they're not ready for surgery. Eighty-five percent of the people that I see in my office, I'm treating with something other than surgery. It's that small group of people at the end of their disease that are getting knee and hip replacements. So don't be afraid at least to come and let us check in for you.
At Lake's Alignment, we would like to take this time to thank our community for your support over the last sixty-six years, and especially these last few months with the opening of our brand-new Truck Center. When you drive into Lake's Alignment, you get master-trained technicians like Anthony Penny. Everybody calls him Bug, but it means so much to us. And on behalf of Neil Harden, Lisa, our staff, and the entire Lake family, we thank you for supporting us since nineteen fifty-four. Come see us today. We open every morning at eight o'clock, and now our Truck Center is open on Saturday to serve your big trucks and equipment from eight until twelve. At Lake's Alignment, we thank you in this entire community, and we'll continue to serve you with the best-trained staff and friendly, courteous service. Lake's Alignment, hometown people serving hometown people. Come see us today. One oh four Johnson Street, East Dublin.
All right. Well, now move to the first item on the regular agenda, which is the approval of the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one City Council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we...
Accept the minutes.
All right. We have a motion, and it's set. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes aye. We're now at the point where we will administer the oath of office to our new at-large council members. First, let me say that Councilperson Lake Tess Godfrey is unable to attend tonight as she is in quarantine. She has asked me to let the public know that she is extremely excited about her service on the City Council, and she regrets that she is unable to attend. She has told me that she wants to be sworn in at the first possible moment that she comes out of quarantine because she is so excited to begin her service for the City of Dublin. So we will look forward to the administration of the oath of office to Tess Godfrey at the earliest possible time. Now we will begin with the administration of the oath to Sarah Colby by Chief Superior Court Judge Anna Gillis.
I, Sarah Colby, do solemnly swear...
I, Sarah Colby, do solemnly swear...
...that I will well and truly...
...well and truly...
...perform the duties...
...form the duties...
...member of the City Council...
...of a member of the City Council...
...of the City of Dublin...
...of the City of Dublin...
...to the best of my skill...
...to the best of my skill...
...and ability... ...and as to me...
...and as to me...
...shall seem to be for all...
...shall seem to be for all...
...the best interests...
...the best interests...
...and welfare...
...and welfare...
...of the city...
...without fear...
...without fear...
...favor or affection...
...favor or affection... ...that I will support and defend...
...that I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the State of Georgia...
...the Constitutions of the State of Georgia...
...and the United States of America...
...and the United States of America...
...that I am not the holder of any office...
...I am not the holder of any office...
...of trust under the government...
...of trust under the government...
...of the United States...
...of the United States...
...any other state...
...any other state...
...or any foreign state...
...for any foreign state...
...which I am prohibited from holding...
...which I am, for which I am prohibited from holding...
...by the laws...
...by the laws...
...of the State of Georgia...
...of the State of Georgia...
...that I am not the holder...
...that I am not the holder...
...of any unaccounted for...
...of any unaccounted for...
...public money...
...public money...
...due this state...
...due this state...
...or any political subdivision...
...or any political subdivision...
...or authority thereof...
...or authority thereof...
...that I have been a resident...
...that I have been a resident...
...of the City of Dublin...
...of the City of Dublin...
...for the time required...
...for the time required...
...of the Constitution...
...of the Constitution...
...and the law of this state...
...and the law of this state...
...and that I am otherwise qualified...
...and that I am otherwise qualified...
...to hold this office...
...to hold this office...
...by the Constitution...
...by the Constitution...
...and the laws of this state...
...and the laws of this state...
...and the charter...
...and the charter...
...and ordinances...
...and ordinances...
...of the City of Dublin...
...of the City of Dublin...
...so help me God.
Thank you for allowing me to start. I'm proud of all of you guys, and I'm proud of those in each side.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
I turn to the right hand, repeat that. I, Richard Mascaro...
I, Richard Mascaro...
...do solemnly swear...
Do you solemnly swear...
...that I will well and truly...
That I will well and truly...
...perform the duties...
Perform the duties...
...of a member of the City Council...
...of a member of the City Council...
...of the City of Dublin...
...of the City of Dublin...
...to the best of my skill...
...to the best of my skill...
...and abilities...
...and abilities...
...and as to me...
...and as to me...
...shall seem to be for the best interests...
...shall seem to be for the best interests...
...and welfare of the city...
...and welfare of the city...
...without fear...
...without fear...
...favor or affection...
...favor or affection...
...that I will support and defend...
...that I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the State of Georgia...
...the Constitution of the State of Georgia...
...and the United States of America...
...and the United States of America...
...that I am not the holder...
...that I am not the holder...
...of any office of trust...
...of any office of trust...
...under the government of the United States...
...under the government of the United States...
...any other state...
...any other state...
...or any foreign state...
...or any foreign state...
...which I am prohibited...
...which I am prohibited...
...from holding...
...from holding...
...by the laws of the State of Georgia...
...by the laws of the State of Georgia...
...that I am not the holder...
...that I am not the holder...
...of any unaccounted for...
...of any unaccounted for...
...public money...
...public money...
...due this state...
...due this state...
...or any political subdivision...
...or any political subdivision...
...or authority thereof...
...or authority thereof...
...that I have been a resident of the City of Dublin...
...that I have been a resident of the City of Dublin...
...for the time required...
...for the time required...
...of the Constitution...
...of the Constitution...
...and the laws of this state...
...and the laws of this state...
...and that I am otherwise qualified...
...and that I am otherwise qualified...
...to hold this office...
...to hold this office...
...by the Constitution...
...by the Constitution...
...and the laws of this state...
...and the laws of this state...
...and the charter...
...and the charter...
...and the ordinances of the City of Dublin...
...and ordinance of the City of Dublin...
...so help me God...
...so help me God.
Mr. Mayor, your counsel is dealer's wall.
Thank y'all for trusting us, the city. We look forward to doing our part to make it better. I thank y'all for bringing that.
The next item on the agenda is the appointment of the Municipal Court Judge. By city charter, this appointment is made by vote of the mayor and the council. Do we have a nomination for appointment of Municipal Court Judge?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Harold McClendon.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brown and a second by Councilman Jones. All those in favor of appointment of Harold McClendon as Municipal Court Judge, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Judge McClendon.
I, Harold McClendon, a citizen of Lawrence County, Georgia, being newly appointed as the judge of municipal court for the City of Dublin, and a recipient of public funds and services rendered as such employee, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of Municipal Court Judge for the City of Dublin, Georgia, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of Georgia and the United States of America, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which I am prohibited from holding, by the laws of the State of Georgia, that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am otherwise qualified to hold this office by the Constitution and the laws of this state, and the charter and ordinances of the City of Dublin, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties imposed upon me as the judge of municipal court for the City of Dublin while in office to the best of my skill and ability. Do you will, please say aye.
I will.
Mayor, your municipal court is dealer's wall.
I turn to the City Council, who serves the City of Dublin again. It's been a great break, and so long I forget how many years, fifteen, seventeen years. I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the appointment of the city attorney. By city charter, this is a appointment by vote of the mayor and the City Council. Do we have a motion as to the appointment of the city attorney?
Make a motion for Julius King.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Briggs. Any discussion? All those in favor of the appointment of Julius King as city attorney, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes aye. Mr. King.
I, Julius King, a citizen of Lawrence County, Georgia, being appointed as the city attorney for the City of Dublin and a recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office of city attorney for the City of Dublin, Georgia, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of Georgia and the United States of America, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, or any other state, or any foreign state, for which I am prohibited from holding, by the laws of the State of Georgia, that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to this state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am otherwise qualified to hold this office by the Constitution and the laws of this state, and the charter and ordinances of the City of Dublin, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties imposed upon me as city attorney for the City of Dublin while in office to the best of my skill and ability. So help me God. Do you will, please say aye.
I will.
Mr. Mayor, I hate to say it, but I'm the Duke Blue Devil. Serving as our city attorney, but I know he will bring great knowledge to this position.
Well, listen, it's an honor and a privilege to be serving my hometown and to be amongst so many friends and family. We're thanking my mom, my dad, and my aunt, my wife, my kids, coming out, and I look forward to working with the mayor and the council. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dustin Gay. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon with Houston Clinic Orthopedics, and we'd really like to invite everybody to come out to our new office facility to take a look at it. It's a larger space with physical therapy, and we're just excited to have it, and we'd love for people to come out and visit us.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
It's nothing personal, it's just business.
Hello?
That's how some people do things.
Right away.
To us, everything we do is personal. Because anyone can answer the call. It's who shows up that matters most. That's the quality of your independent agent. And the company that stands behind them. Ask Currie Maffet Insurance in Dublin if auto owners make sense for you.
This is Resolution Number Twenty-C zero one. A resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve and set the terms of an agreement with the district attorney for the Dublin judicial circuit, the provision of prosecution services in the justice of court of the city of Dublin to set effective date and for other lawful purposes. And just by way of further explanation, as we're in this transition period to see when someone prosecuted in justice of court and the district attorney's office of state law allows the city to contract with the director for those services, and that is staff request and action for the council. This resolution will make that effect.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Do we have a motion regarding the resolution? We have a motion from Mr. Briggs. We have a second from Mr. Jones. Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is the election of the mayor pro temp. Section two point five of the city's charter states that the mayor and council by majority vote shall elect a council member to serve as mayor pro temp. Do we have a nomination for mayor pro temp?
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Councilman Brown as mayor pro temp.
We have a.
Motion.
We have a, we have a motion from Councilman Mascara. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Briggs. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Brown. The next item on the agenda is the election of chairman of council. City ordinance section two seventeen provides for the position of a chairman of council. This person will preside at meetings when there is an absence of dis- or disability of both the mayor and the mayor pro temp. Do we have a motion for these, a nomination for chairman of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to let Councilwoman Colby as chairman of council.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Briggs. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Congratulations, Councilman Colby. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of the official gazette. Under the state law, the mayor and council must appoint an official gazette to serve as a legal organ for publishing required notices. Do we have a motion for the appointment of the official gazette?
Make a motion to Currie Harrell be the legal gazette.
We have a motion to appoint Currie Harrell as the legal organ of the city.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Briggs. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The Currie Harrell is appointed as the official gazette. The next item is the approval of bills over three thousand dollars.
You have a list of those bills in the packet. And we'll send a motion and second for approval.
Make a motion to approve to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? No, no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is the approval of purchases over three thousand dollars. We'll need to go through these one by one. We have several. We'll begin with item eight, Taylor Street Paying.
The lease of this bid for paying the Taylor Street between two railroad tracks which are close to Dublin construction. This project will involve digging up a position of railway and installing concrete for the longevity purposes and also due to the high-end industrial use in that area, particularly for Dublin construction. The low bidder was McQuillan Enterprises in the amount of fifty thousand five hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents, with completion to be in the third age in the day that would be a notification of what we did. And also a part of this bid, the cost of the actual concrete is not included in the bid in Dublin construction because they will, in the life of this, or maybe in the day, has agreed to provide a concrete foliage project at their cost, which we're estimating, our estimates estimate to be around fifteen thousand dollars. This is an estimate, and so the staff request of council is to award the low bid below their, for the enterprises over fifty million, as well as offer my staff to purchase the concrete from Dublin construction up to seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you for that background information. Just for the benefit of the public at pre-council, which was held each week or each, before each city council meeting, and the international public is invited to attend the pre-council meeting. But at the pre-council meeting, staff show council members photographs of the area along with additional details about the proposed work and information about where the budget this place wants to come from. Do we have any discussion on this item of the agenda at this point? Are there any questions of the council members, two staff regarding this item? All right, would someone like to make a motion regarding this, this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones. We have a second from Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The second item is a copy release.
So a current copy release of the city of Dublin and all of our facilities, leases, seven hundred units across various buildings, and the lease is set to expire on January seventeenth, so we've solicited bids for that service to continue. The bid is for a one-year agreement with four additional one-year renewal options, and we received five bids below bid as far as the actual lease of the equipment came from MBG out of Macon in the amount of five thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and forty cents. The other bids that we received from Alexander's here in Dublin in the amount of five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and forty-four cents. G P Technologies of Macon in the amount of six thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Middle religious practice in Dublin was nine thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and twelve cents. And rehab Macon was their bid of eight thousand one hundred dollars and thirty-six cents. In addition to the cost of the equipment, we paid per page whatever usage is a cost each of leases. And between MBG and the next time there was one of the Alexander's, Alexander's per page rate was better. They, their color page rate was point zero four oh six. Was four, four cents, four cents per page. And for black and white, point zero zero seven. And then MBG was point zero seven two five for black and white and point oh five for nickel for color pages. And so staff asked the council to decide and make a decision between those. We do have a three percent level preference for those of the city of Dublin or citizens of the city of Dublin and based on last year's usage of Alexander's actually be the low bid on that. Or, I'm sorry, they would be within three percent of the low bid.
All right, you heard the explanation from our city managers. And again, I think the details of the number of pages that the city used last year and prior years was, was discussed at pre-council. Do we have any questions of staff and the council members? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
Have a motion to accept the low bid of Alexander's.
We have a motion from council, Councilman Colby, to accept the Alexander's bid.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting Alexander's bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
The city of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today. So for your home, choose the most natural resource. Safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call two seven seven five zero four eight today and let us help you start saving today.
Hi, I'm Tracy Middlebrooks. I'm with Muddy Paws Dublin. We are a boarding, grooming, daycare, and training facility. Our facility is a group play area. Our dogs get six to eight hours playtime every day. So when your dog comes to stay with us, they're not just sitting in a kennel. We have indoor facilities as well as outdoor facilities. We do separate dogs according to size and temperament. All of our kennels are indoors, so when your dog stays with us, they are sleeping indoors in a climate-controlled environment. When it's too hot or too cold outside, this is one of the areas the dogs can come to get playtime. That way, they're not just sitting in a kennel. If need be, we can rotate dogs between outside and inside. So if your dog is only used to be inside and only goes outside to potty, we can accommodate that. We have a full-service grooming salon six days a week. We also offer training. I am a certified professional dog trainer. I can do everything from basic obedience up to canine good citizens tests. So if you have any questions, feel free to call. Most of the training is done here on-site. We have boarding also, as well as daycare. Boarding starts at twenty-seven a night. We do give a multiple dog discount as well as military discounts. We like to say that a tired dog is a happy dog. When your dog comes to stay with us, we look at that as them getting a vacation.
The next item is the demolition of two houses.
So the city did in lieu of the recent space, it became a real estate house, the property owner decided to deal with the properties and so to eradicate the life that exists of these properties, the city's ready to demolish and clear the lot. But the bids on this property are eight thirteen and a half South Jefferson Street and one thousand eight on Franklin Street. Current period construction was a low bid in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, and they have done a lot of demolition work over the previous years, and we have been very satisfied with the work. And staff asked the council over the bid to current period construction in the early down time.
Thank you for that information. Does council have any questions of staff relating to this item?
Yeah, what was the bid from the other co- who was the other companies and what was their bid if you had?
Complete demolition was fifty thousand dollars. Storage design was seventy-six thousand nine hundred dollars. And wrecking board was a miracle of seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Any, any further questions of staff?
Yeah, um, only builders that, I know, I know they're code violations, but anybody go and ask and look at the structure to make sure there wasn't any good structure, the structure damage and they need to be torn down, it couldn't be rehabbed, or the structure looked bad on these.
Yes, and in fact, what inspections are taken for from usually does and we have these houses, the dealers is trying to accumulate enough of the property so that the, you know, the, and the more companies to deal with the demolition projects is we have more property to be demolished. But these one in particular, I don't know, I think the one on South Jefferson Street is a great risk to the public. It's sent the city on to the fifty and a small child or something that would wonder of the property that are concerned there, so, yes, these properties were expected. They had to do as best as possible. All of that has been done in a category and factor to the bid, so that would be on that.
Those are your questions. Any other questions? All right, since we have no other questions of staff, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. I have a motion of eight thirteen and a half South Jefferson Street, one thousand eight hundred.
All right, we have a motion to award the, award the bid at current period construction. There's a motion of those two houses.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next item is the purchase of a gas apartment meter corrector.
So the meter of natural gas, as you increase the pressure and the volume of gas that's going through the meter, there's the need to have a what's called a gas meter corrector, which adjusts the meter to take into account temperature and pressure that's on the meter. And we have one currently on what they pay here where there's a large, a large gas system for the city. And we've taken bids, or we got a quote from natural gas trade, which is something that we use very often for these meter corrections and meters and stuff, and it's not a whole for them. And we budgeted thirty thousand dollars for a meter replacement repair in the gas department, having just over ninety-eight hundred dollars left to spend. And this, this meter corrector needs to be replaced. And natural gas trade has one that they have to provide, or just at least seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, and staff access to more patches.
Any questions of staff regarding the meter corrector purchase? Hearing none of questions, do we have a motion?
Second.
A motion from Councilman Briggs. And do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Final item. Excuse me, the next last item is a golf cart leasing bid.
We took bids on leasing sixty of the golf carts for the golf course, and the, the bid includes a factor of trading in our existing fleet of golf carts. And club cart, after, after due to that consideration, can as a low bid total, and it's a five-year lease of golf carts. The total of the lease is fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, and that includes considering the trade-in that they allocated for our existing carts, which is a hundred twenty-six, a hundred fifty dollars. And the lease is a true lease, there are warranty companies in the carts. It does not include a service agreement, but there's a little bit of the new carts that would not need much servicing. And so staff has presented to council for consideration to get the golf cart, uh, golf course, sixty of golf carts.
And my understanding is that the, did this bid, you have to be accepted or rejected tonight because of a time limitation on the bid?
Yes, that's correct. And then my understanding, you know, we have a lot of people who joined us tonight or are well-known for a couple of days, so council wants to, we can always put this out for the end if you want to reject the bids tonight. And maybe some more long-term studies on the golf course.
Do we have any questions of staff regarding this issue?
If we table and, and decide to go, what's the, what's the, um, delivery time, delivery it takes to get the golf carts in?
Um, not sure about the time of delivery, probably speed is still, uh, I don't know. But I don't, probably like thirty days, probably. Yeah, it's got two, like we awarded today, they have a dream, one to do as a delivery date, so we look at how we sit most for what we want.
All right, any other questions of staff regarding the proposal? Hearing none, we have a motion related to bid.
Mr. Brown, I make a motion to not accept the bid and take further discussion.
We have a motion to not accept the bid so that we can have further discussion later.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Briggs. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. And just for the public's benefit, I would like to just relate that I believe that everybody on council is looking for a long-term solution to the work of your golf course. on council is looking for a long-term solution to the work of your golf course. We support the golf course, we want it to thrive. We just need a little bit of time to figure out how we can fit together a comprehensive plan for the golf course. I believe that, that that captures the sentiment of council. The next item is Southside Station full of resistant glass.
So the portal will be the best, um, shooting take place in front of our Southside Fire Station and just recently we had one of those, so we're paying some fire work for doing some of our fire, for the neighbor, which is in front of building, a very good reason to hit. And so the chief is going to ask that we get council to approve installation of some bullets, just in glass. And we received a quote from Dublin Glass Inc. for that, and then eight thousand eight hundred dollars with material and labor. And after speaking with the city director of light handles, we have some funds, also general fund from another line that we have, that we can shift to our department. And so we will present that to council for in a budget at the next week, if you agree for this purchase. And staff has to approve the purchase so we can protect our property.
All right, do we have any questions for staff regarding the Southside Fire Station? Hearing other questions, do we have a motion?
Second.
A motion from Councilman Briggs, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Jones. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
The diesel and automotive technology programs at O'Conne Fall Line Technical College are hands-on and can be completed in a year and a half or less. Students gain valuable experience working on state-of-the-art equipment and training aids, and even maintain the college's diesel truck and vehicle fleet, which allows them to see the real-world issues they'll encounter on the job before they graduate. During labs, students are exposed to every part of the automobile or diesel truck and are required to put the theories they've learned in the classroom and during lectures into action. OFTC's Diesel Program is certified through Daimler Trucks of North America's Get Ahead Program, which allows students to add certifications to their resume before entering the workforce. Automotive Technology students can also earn entry-level certifications through Automotive Service Excellence. Adding these certifications to their resume before entering the workforce sets OFTC graduates apart when applying for jobs. These programs are flexible and instructors work with students to accomplish their individual goals. Day and some evening class options are available, and the majority of a student's classwork is done online, so time on campus is spent applying knowledge and practicing skills through lab assignments. Careers in the diesel and automotive technician industry are in demand, and the more a technician learns, the more valuable they become to their employer. Opportunities in these fields are endless.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs, and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've gone to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future, that's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter, member FDIC.
The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance resuming ten point five acres more or less from a professional zone, from A1 zone. And just for the benefit of the public, this is a reading of the ordinance, there will be no vote on this tonight. The vote will occur after the second reading.
This is ordinance number twenty-two dash zero three, an amendment to the official zoning map for the City of Dublin, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning ten point five six acres more or less, a property located at Parkville, one one B zero eight six, Dublin, Georgia, from P Professional Zone to A1 Agrozone, a proposed use to be an RV park.
The next item is item fourteen, first reading of the ordinance rezoning point three acres more or less at two thirteen West Mary Street from R2 to R3. Again, this is the first reading only.
This is ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two, an amendment to the official zoning map for the City of Dublin, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning point zero, uh, point three zero acres more or less, a property located at two thirteen West Mary Street, Dublin, Georgia, from R2, single-family residential to R3, multi-family residential zone, a proposed use as a boarding home for residents and other purposes.
Right, the next item is item fifteen, first reading of the ordinance rezoning one point seven nine acres from B to M1.
This is, this is brand B, I have an ordinance number.
Yes, twenty-two oh one.
It's ordinance number twenty-two oh one, this. An amendment to the official zoning map for the City of Dublin, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning one point seven nine acres more or less, a land located at one twenty-two Gilchrist Parkway from B to Howie, Howie Orient Business Zone to M1, warehouse of light engine, industrial use, a proposed use of a climate-controlled sub storage facility. And just to give some references, the old Fred's building that is located behind the Dollar General, that's off of Gilchrist Parkway, down close to Roses and Fort Meadows.
Thank you. And for the benefit of the public, just want to say that if anyone has an interest in these properties, or has an interest in the planning or zoning of different properties in the City of Dublin, again, the first one is ten acres on Howie two fifty-seven with a proposed use of an RV park. The second is a proposed use of two thirteen West Mary Street for a multi-family residence. And then the third, rezoning would be for the, the old Fred's store on Gilchrist Parkway for a climate-controlled warehouse. So if anyone in the public has an interest in any of these three properties or in zoning in general, there will be a, this will be read for a second time at the next meeting. You're welcome to attend and buy copies. We'll now move to the first reading of the ordinance to increase the spending limit of the city manager.
This is ordinance number twenty-two zero four, it's an ordinance by the mayor of council of the City of Dublin, to amend the ordinance to increase the city manager's authority for approval of disbursements without approval of the mayor of council, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. And just for some additional information, the spending limit of the city manager's is currently three thousand dollars, and that for, at least since nineteen eighty-six, I believe it is. And actually often imagine the cost of just everyday business of the city, just the creasements at that time. And I think this is something that actually previous city manager, actually almost had every minute especially with council. So I'm just going to, more, but in looking at those yields and what they have as you managers authorized to scan comparable to our size, fifteen thousand dollars was a, was a good figure. One thing I want to point out to council is the way this ordinance is written thus far, I, I spoke with the mayor about it, and what we can do is, I think I'm going to present an amendment to the line to include the provision that the council will be provided a report of all of those disbursements that have happened, you know, in twenty committees that will see everything about this company, or we're going to leave the city of Dublin.
All right, again, this was just the first reading, so we'll take action on that ordinance at the next meeting. And again, the amendment that was requested related to providing those, that list of disbursements is our attempt to have greater transparency to the public regarding all expenditures by the city. So appreciate you incorporating that, and we'll look at it at the next meeting. Item seventeen is discussion and action on a resolution to appoint Chandler Sigg and Richardson Katz and Briggs as attorney pending litigation.
Resolution twenty-two zero four, it's a resolution by the mayor of council of the City of Dublin to secure legal services of the law for Chandler Sigg and Richardson Katz and Briggs, a legal defense in the case of Asset Recovery Incorporated versus the City of Dublin, pending a large case of legal court case number twenty-one C G Z or A four D G, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
All right. So it's typical for the city council to hire outside counsel, legal counsel for pending litigation. You've heard the resolution, do we have any questions for staff about the?
Mr. Moore, yeah.
I was going to add, this is the litigation that came up this December. The city has interest holders through Durham, what's called Durham, and usually they, they set them up by a legal defense for the city and returning legal services, council will be sued for motor vehicle access and that kind of thing. This particular case involves excess proceeds from a tax sale, a commoners proceeding versus duty, which actually falls into a, a hole, not a hole, but what are interest holders in my cover? So we're having to take some of the council for that.
That resolution number was twenty-two dash oh four?
The other one was an ordinance twenty-two oh four.
It was ordinance twenty, because there was a twenty, because it was a resolution twenty-two oh?
Yeah. And this one's resolution twenty-two oh four.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff regarding this resolution? Do we have a motion?
So, so move.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Briggs, we have a second, we have a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Next item is a resolution from an agreement from Brandon Chaney.
This is resolution twenty-two oh two, I have a word for.
Yeah, my, my misunderstanding.
It's my, a resolution by the mayor of council of the City of Dublin to accept and approve the terms of contract agreement with Fred and Brandon Roy, the relocation of the structure at seven twenty-three West Mary Street, Dublin, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. And just for further information for the public's benefit, Mr. Chaney was the sole bidder in our request for someone to relocate the structure that sat from seven twenty-three West Mary Street. As you've already noted, the agenda about the ward, or hopefully the ward, a contract for what is called the Subs Park Transportation Project. And as part of that project, they ran about would be, could show that right at where Flats and River, which is West Mary Street, which will help fly with the traffic right there. And so this house, as part of that project, the city had to contend with and negotiate with all the person because the weather and everything that they were taking up for the houses. She was previously awarded the bid and paid for the home and had given attention to being relocated, but because the limited contractor that re-located the house, they were booked up and she ensured us that it would be able to be done. Hopefully by end of this month, it got worse to the middle of February. And I confirmed by the engineering department that even we have worked the bid on the construction project, that delayed this, will not delay the project. So we asked the council, give her this opportunity to move the house and save us from having to demolish it and vote for it.
All right, you've heard Mr. Brown's description of this resolution. Do we have any questions of staff? Hearing none, questions, do we have a motion?
Most to approve.
Do we have a motion from Councilman McCarry, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is discussion and action on a resolution on agreement with Michael Clay.
This is resolution twenty-two zero three, it's a resolution by the mayor of council of the City of Dublin to accept and approve the terms of an agreement with Michael Clay for professional consulting purposes, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. And by the way, for the relation, I'm sure most of the ground room has heard of Michael Clay, if you've done anything with the City of Dublin. He is now a longtime utility director and has a wealth of knowledge of just everyone who's in the city, not only to utilities. But he retired a couple of years ago and hasn't worked, had came back and started working as a part-time employee. And now we're kind of, gives a bunch of people to work with, if it's enough of us at his life for us. But his duties have been turned over to other employees and there's still a lot of few things that, that staff, the current staff needs to get from him, all the education and how the process is worked, particularly regarding the natural gas buying itself. And so there's a need to continue his service, but on a consultant basis and not as a part-time employee. He also serves as a board member and is representative of the city, not only on the municipal gas authority in Florida, and also the GRD, which is the Georgia Rural Water Association. And so we asked the council, approve this resolution, approve the contract, this for six months, or the automatic renewal for six more, and then when the government agency get further.
All right, you've heard the description of this item. Does anyone have staff questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion? We have a motion from Councilman Briggs, we have a second from Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The final item on the agenda tonight is discussion and action on the award of a bid for the Subs Park Road Improvements Project.
So this is the project that I looked at earlier, Subs Park Road, the project will involve, you know, building around about Westmore Street, Flats Superior Road, and it will be around about a blizzard avenue intersection with North County Street. The expansion of Subs Park also includes a new track that's sealed at Westmore Street and Northford Street. There, I hate to run out of the local council planner, because he, with a nice picture of this, so the public, if you're interested in seeing what the project is going to look like, hopefully it'll be done. This is just for road work, though, it's not actual park improvements. But we have a little C hall and, you might have a little C, you'd like to see it, the public would like to see it. We received, this is just for road work, we received a bid from Compton Enterprises that were located in the two billion three hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. I should point out, too, that this is a project, and you may see the sign across town that talk about Tia, T-Sloes, this is a project that will be funded by Tia and T-Sloes that has been collected through sales tax. So this is not something that's coming from the city general fund or, or our, our slots. So, sales tax that council approved, the bid and awarded to Compton Enterprises Incorporated. We originally estimated the cost to be two point nine, just over two point nine million dollars, so it came in, but it wasn't that.
All right, thank you for that. And I do want to emphasize that this would be coming out of the T-Sloes sales tax money and not out of property taxes. It's a large amount of money, but it's paid for by, by sales tax, which as everyone knows, we have people from all over our region coming to Dublin as a regional shopping center and paying that sales tax and helping fund these projects for us. Do we have any staff, questions of staff related to this project?
We have a start date and about an end date for that. I know you said that moving that house on a, how long it gonna take?
All right, so.
Once, once the planning and receiving notice of award, we'll meet with them and determine the start date of the contract. But with them being already, you know, the work will be for inside, I expect the start date.
The, but Compton Enterprises, it's a, it's a, why we probably, so.
About, how long it take?
You know how long it takes?
Estimate, estimate?
The contract time is twelve months.
Okay.
Any other staff questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Most to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay? The ayes have it. Quickly, this is the first step of revitalization of the entire urban area.
Century Twenty-One, Durden Cornege would like to take this opportunity to thank you for another wonderful year. And on behalf of the agents at Century Twenty-One, including agents Brian Howell, Charlene Lamb, Adam White, David Deeds, Jennifer Bradley, Jay Brantley, Jim Jarrett, Ruth Watson, Charlene Brantley, Reina Dufferly, Yvonne Robertson, and broker George Durden. If you're buying or selling a home, commercial property, or land, count on the professionals at Century Twenty-One Durden Cornege. For more information, call us at two seven two fifteen thirty-five, or log on to c21dublin.com. Century Twenty-One Durden Cornege, broker George Durden. Century Twenty-One, Durden Carnegie, broker George Durden. Progressive Rule Telephone Co-op offers a full range of communication products and services to its members in Lawrence County and surrounding areas. We take pride in being your total communications provider, and we work hard to provide quality services at the best prices. In addition to offering phone service, we provide high-speed internet and digital high-def TV. And we always strive to put our members first. Progressive Rule, your total communications company. Small enough to know you, large enough to serve you. ProgressiveTel.com. Call four seven eight nine eight four forty-two oh one or stop by eight ninety Simpson Avenue in Rents. Progressive Rule Telephone Co-op.
Well, that is all of the agenda items that we have, uh, for tonight. Who want to, is this our youth council here?
It is.
Uh, will the youth council please stand up? Uh, I just want the public to see that this is the City of Dublin Youth Council, thank you for coming to tonight, coming to night. You know, the City of Dublin supports mentorship programs and youth services, uh, and this is a great opportunity for y'all to see how government works, uh, to learn the nitty-gritty of, of dollars and cents and, and awarding projects and conducting meetings. And so hopefully, uh, this is a great opportunity for you, we appreciate you being involved and being interested. And we appreciate our youth programs director who is here as well, will you stand up please? This is Utralius Spikes, he's our new youth program director, thank you, Mr. Spikes, for agreeing with council tonight.
Thank you.
All right, uh, it's now time for the actual comments. We'll just start it, Mr. Garrett. Do you have any one? Mr. Briggs?
I'd like to swear I would like to give my, uh, all the talents that you've laid by y'all, I appreciate that, certainly. Take some consideration, uh, discussing. And I'd like to, um, congratulate the, uh, the only quarter end of the year, that's, that's a very, you got a, a big thing to be, uh, thank y'all, hope that y'all take care, stay safe, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs, Ms. Colton.
Um, I just want to say thank you for, um, trusting, uh, me with decisions for the city and I hope that I represent you well. I'm, I'm very excited about our Tuesday, uh, tour of the city and, uh, being able to see some of the, uh, the background and the employees there. Um, definitely want to wish, uh, those employees, um, that received awards tonight, congratulations. Um, I'm glad to see some progress being made on Stubbs Park. I think all of us are, are looking forward to having a central park, um, not only for our children, but also for visitors to our community. Um, and I really appreciate all the citizens' comments and bringing up, uh, those issues to our attention, attention. Garden Club and Pickleball and, um, and issues throughout our city that, uh, need to be addressed. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank everyone for coming out, I really, I want to say thank, uh, congratulating for your, the quarter for your, uh, year. And, um, really, um, everyone that made their comments, we'll see, listen, and I look forward to working with the upcoming council, mayor council. Look forward to working with you, but one thing I hope and pray, that we do spend more time talking and getting to know each other so we can work better together, and let's not prejudge by what we see or what we think, what we heard about a person, but let's get to know each other. That's all we can sit down and really make the decision and prove ourselves, thank everybody here. Go to make the city of Dublin the best city we can make it, but we got to get along and we got to get to know each other, get that done. So I hope and pray that we get that, then our youth council, glad to see y'all here and, uh, learning government. And, uh, look forward to, uh, working with, I hope we can get together and actually, I hope the council get together, actually start mentoring and helping take, grab a couple of these young people on our wings, just taking them around, letting them see the city, letting them visit some of these committee meetings, and go and get their input because, you know, we sit there, talking about we're senior citizens in city, but it got a lot of youth there, we got a lot of young people in there and they, and that's how we go draw more young people and stay vibrant. So let's listen to them, listen to their ideas, and let's improve and hope everybody be safe and stay safe.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would like to just echo what's gone before and thank everybody for being here. I think I'd be remiss if I did not, uh, make mention of the outgoing council members and thank them for their service. Uh, and I look forward to serving with everyone up here to, uh, and look forward to also with, uh, council, like Godfrey being, uh, being sworn in soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Daniels, do you have any comments? Matt, of course. Mr. King, is the attorney, would you like to make any comments? I look forward to working with you, I know we've known each other for a long time, I'm excited that you've, uh, agreed to come back to Dublin to help serve the city in this way. Mr. Powell.
I just want to thank, uh, since we've come to the meeting tonight, um, and I, I also extend my appreciation to, um, former councilmen Davis, Embers, and Smith for their service on council life thoroughly for working with each of you, um, to the new council, who's coming on tonight, and this guy, who I'm sure is watching. Uh, look forward to working with each of you, um, and I'm very excited about, um, you know, what the future holds for Dublin. Um, also, I would suggest I not thank, uh, toward the crowd of DEA for helping to set up the change of meeting of our meeting tonight, as well as my assistant, Alicia Air. Thank you very much, and Mr. Brown, our city clerk, for assisting us on setting up this event, like that, that the development, um, and I said.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, uh, just a final word, Judge Gillis, thank you for coming and, uh, delivering the oath tonight, we always appreciate your participation. Um, and I want to thank everybody who came, and I just do a great turnout, love hearing all the system comments. We may have to start holding our city council meetings here in theaters if we keep getting turnout like this. Uh, also, uh, I appreciate the feedback that I received from my first meeting last month, I, I got some, some constructive feedback that we needed more explanation about the items for the people watching on Facebook, because there are actually more people watching online than in person. And, um, and so what we're going to try to do is provide a little more explanation of each of the items that, uh, comes before council so that the public is fully informed and that we're acting transparently. Um, and with that, I want to thank everyone again, and this meeting is now adjourned.